All right, welcome everybody to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board number four meeting for August. The time now is six thirty P M. We'll jump right into the agenda. With the city and state monthly reports, first off, we have the Honolulu Fire Department in person. Welcome.
Hey, good evening. I'm Professor Thompson with the Kamaki Fire Station. So I'm gonna go over some of the statistics from the month of July. For fires, we had structure fires, zero, wildland brush, zero, nuisance fires, two, cooking, zero, activated alarm with no fire, there were nine. For emergencies, medical emergencies, we had forty-three, motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, zero, motor vehicle crash or collision was zero, mountain rescue, zero, ocean rescue, zero, and hazardous materials incidents, one. The fire safety tip is for back to school. So educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire-safe environment. Don't overload outlets, keep lamps, light fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator. Cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and then plug it. And if a disaster happens, know who to call. Knowing who to call and where to meet is important. So you should pick one main contact locally and one out of state. Who it may be easy to reach during a disaster.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department from the board? Anybody online? Anybody here? Any questions? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Thanks for coming up. Appreciate it. Okay, so we are going to move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. I have the statistics for July. There are fifteen motor vehicle thefts, three burglaries, twenty-eight thefts, and eighteen unauthorized entry to vehicle cases. Total cost for service for the month is six thousand four hundred and twelve. And um safety tip for the month, I would like to read this news release by Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers Health Police Department would like to inform the public about a fake jewelry scam that is occurring. There have been numerous reports and sightings of individuals approaching people over various parts of the island and asking if they would like to purchase jewelry that appear to be authentic. The individuals are stating that they are in desperate need of cash and are willing to sacrifice the jewelry for discounted price. Most instances involve the individuals approaching senior citizens in malls and shopping centers. Please do not purchase any jewelry from strangers on the streets. Purchase should only be made through reputable dealers or stores. And any with their mission about this incident is to call Crime Stoppers or anything suspicious reported to nine-one-one. And I'm available to take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department from the board? Okay, seeing none, any questions from the public? Okay, seeing no questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. Okay, our next report is from the Board of Water Supply. Lorna, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Hi, okay. Good evening. I do have one main breakthrough for the last month that was on Ninth Avenue on July fifteenth. The announcement I have this month is about, we are sending out a questionnaire. So the Border Water Supply is participating in a water access and affordability survey taking place in communities across the country. So we encourage the public to fill out the questionnaire through Sunday, September fifteenth, and should take about five to ten minutes to complete this. Your input will assist the Border Water Supply to implement programs that will better help vulnerable residents, including our Capuna. Responses are going to be confidential. You can go to our satellite, with Satellite City Hall and our website, and you'll see copies on both sites there. That's an announcement I have for tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you, Lorna. Any questions for the Border Water Supply from the board? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Lorna. Thanks for coming out tonight. Okay, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna take one item out of order, and this is the update from the Kamaki Business and Professional Association as the representatives have another commitment this evening. So I can call upon you, Kamaki Business and Professional Association.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ivan. I am the new president for the KBPA.
And then I'm Tu Chan. I'm the vice president for the KBPA this year.
And we're just basically here to inform everybody of two events that we have forthcoming. Our first event is going to be the Kamaki Community Park Cleanup. That's tentative for November second, and information and links to register to help us volunteer and clean the park up will be forthcoming on our website. And we also have the Christmas Parade coming up on December first. Is it December?
December fifth. It's gonna be on December fifth on a Thursday, and we're looking for volunteers for the public safety conducting the traffic.
So we're looking for volunteers, but we're also letting you all know that registrations are now open for the parade. We have sponsorship registration, and we also have individual registrations for members and non-members alike. If you have any questions, our website is the kbpawahi.com. That's kbpawahi.com. Thank you, everybody. Have a great afternoon.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for KBPA? Okay, if not, thanks very much for coming up. Appreciate the updates. Okay, so we'll go back to our regular agenda items with public input is next. It's an opportunity for the community to comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. However, no board action may be taken on these items. Does anyone have any public input? Is Mr. Lau here? I know you emailed me, Mr. Lau. Do you like to give an update on the Mauma Park? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Laot Lau. I have no official office. I'm just a resident of Kamaki. Live at Mauna Leini Heights, and in September of two thousand twenty-three, I first brought to this group my concerns about the wildfire hazard that Mauma Nature Park represents. And I'm here to give you a personal update on the activity that I'm aware of to mitigate the wildfire hazard. Now, again, I will emphasize, I'm just a private citizen who lives close by that area that if there is a fire in that area, my home and the homes around me are likely to be involved if the winds are from the trade wind area. Since I first reported my concern, I have been on the grounds in that nature park twice. And I first volunteered to help with the mitigation, and that is by clearing land, clearing brush, and other wildfire and other tinder up in that area. Because of my experience with walking the walk, I can only talk because it's risky for me at my age to be going on that land to try to clear it out. I have tried to walk that area. It's still full of brush. It's dangerous for people to go on, and I have informed Lori Yamada, who's the chair of Invision Kamaki, that I personally will not be involved in digging brush up and clearing it because of the liability and the risk. And neither will I be recommending that other people of about my age and infirmity would do the same because it's a risk and a liability not only to ourselves, but to the city. So how do we mitigate that risk? I still believe in what I said in September two thousand twenty-three, that there are people in this town who are experts at controlled burning. And I believe there is a place for that up in that rise by people who know what to do. Because much of it is rocky, and so it's not one massive field of wildfire tinder, you know, the grasses that drive. It can be cleared with controlled burning. The other recommendation I would have for the city is that they use a drone or two to survey that area more closely because people cannot tramp that area without risk to themselves. It's so rocky and it's so steep. But you know, guys, that hazard still exists even as we are talking about it. And I have recently received permission through Invision Kamaki to be a volunteer to help with whatever in whatever way I can. And I have signed those volunteer agreements, and they're with the DPR right now, Department of Parks and Recreation. I still stand ready to help, but I cannot put my hands into the work. Nevertheless, I feel there should be a plan that DPR, Department of Parks and Recreation, and HFD, Honolulu Fire Department, is ready to produce, to announce, to assure residents of this community, Kamaki, that there is an effort being made to mitigate that risk. Once a fire starts up there, there's just no telling where it's gonna go, and that is concerning, Brian, and members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lau. Appreciate your comments. Any questions for Mr. Lau? Okay?
Yeah. How you doing, sir? What was it, in two thousand twenty-three? Yeah, so I sent you a couple contacts via email. Did anyone get back to you?
No, not yet.
Not?
We can retrace those steps, though.
Okay.
There are younger men and women, I'm sure, and they probably still stand ready to help. I would not send them out. I couldn't send them out, but people who are in authority could not send them out, I think, without them knowing what should be done. And incidentally, Honolulu Fire Department says there should be in the periphery a clearance of thirty to a hundred feet around that wildfire area in order to meet the regulations. You know what? We don't need thirty feet of clearance all the way around. We don't need a hundred feet of clearance all the way around. I have found that there's ground cover up there, and there are canopies of trees that are being cared for by neighbors who are adjacent to that property. They themselves are acting as deterrents to the wildfire that I didn't know about before I actually went on the ground. So people are concerned, people are doing something, but I do think it's way past time for DPR and HFD to come out with something into which we all could participate. We can talk about those referrals if they still exist.
Okay, yeah, we can talk after here or via email.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lau, with all the fires going on, you know, in different areas. So thank you for your information. And I have a good friend that lives right next to that park, you know, further up. And I was just wondering, has there ever been any fires or any kind of brush fires up there that you can think of that might have happened in the past, just from?
Well, not since I've been a resident of Kamaki, but my wife, into whose home I moved, informed me that, I think it was in the early two thousands, that there was, or maybe nineteen ninety or something like that, there was a fire up there that involved several buildings or residents close to that area. I don't know personally how that fire started, but there were homes involved in that. So it has happened.
Thank you.
Okay, Lori, I think Lori Yamada, I think you have your hand up?
Yeah, Lori Yamada. Well, there were a couple fires up there, and one in the seventies and one, yeah, about nineties, eighties or nineties. And it was more like, you know, cigarette kind of thing, got fire and stuff. But in recent history, there isn't any. And then there's, there are like at least three fire hydrants going along Cocoa Drive going up there. So, you know, it's easy for the fire HFD to hook up holes and stuff. So that's a good sign. And also, there's a riser that was submitted by, what's her name? She's not here. What's her name? Shoot, I forgot. Oh, Amanda Zepeta. And we had a Lisa response from HFD that they said there is a problem that a fire break of thirty to a hundred feet between structures and the overgrowth shall be created and maintained. And HFD will be working with the city and county of Honolulu Parks and Recreation to ensure that this is accomplished. And that was dated six-six-twenty-four. So in the meantime, Invision Kamaki is gonna be sending out a letter to the residents whose property abut Mauma Park, just to tell them that, okay, there's a riser, and the city and county has to act upon it because, you know, we all know how good risers are, right, Mark Wong? They have to respond to it. And that should go out in a couple weeks. So that's in the plans, and the letter would also give the residents ideas of how to protect their own property right now, you know, to clear brush and do this and that, you know, just to be what you call it, self-sustaining instead of waiting for the government to step in and do something. So that's where I'm at.
All right. Well, thanks, Lori. Thanks for the update. Okay, so we're gonna have to move on. Any other public input for items not on the agenda? Online, is that? Noella, did you have your hand up? No? Anybody else? Okay, Noella, did you have a comment for public input? If you can unmute yourself, please, if so.
Okay, I'm so sorry. This is not regarding the situation that the gentleman before me. This is something I really want to put out there for everybody in this meeting and tell everyone you know. Recently, here in Kamaki Kahala, there's been a very concentrated effort for carjackings. Two weeks ago, at the Kahala Mall, they had five from the same group of individuals doing this rotten thing, and my daughter happened to be one of the people they tried to steal the car from. She didn't, they didn't get it, but they did get somebody else earlier that week. And so I talked to Police Chief Logan has a top story from seven to eight every Thursday morning on KHVH eighty-three A M. And so I called up and just asked them to please work with the media and the public about putting a PSA out there for the, they primarily target elderly and women. They watch them in the malls. I myself have been approached by people that want me to open my window. I will not open my window. They ask questions like, do you want to sell your car? In my daughter's case, she got in her car, and they're parking behind cars. And then the bad guy gets out and bangs, tries to get in the car. They also are carrying pepper and mace spray. So what I'm doing here is I'm putting it out to all of the neighborhood board meetings in this area, right in our area, Kamaki, Kahala, Palolo, Diamond Head, all of you folks. And I'm telling everybody, these people and the police, they cannot seem to catch these people. They do it near the supermarkets where the freeway entrance is very easily to get to. But they do, they are doing this. And so hopefully HPD and the media will literally do a reenactment of how easy it is because we are not paying attention, not enough. And the elderly and women are the targets. That's it. The police told this to my daughter, and this to me is a big red alert out to every single one of you, my brothers and sisters, and your families out there because these people, it's getting very dicey out there. So please, pass it on. Get to your car, be ready to get in, look around you. Don't open your window for someone that's knocking randomly on your door. Watch your purse. I mean, the list is endless, but the big one is awareness. If you don't feel safe, then get security to walk you out if it's in the evening hours. But they did this in broad daylight at eight o'clock in the morning at the Kahala Mall two weeks ago on a Thursday morning. And so I just feel very compelled being a citizen of the islands and of this east Honolulu neighborhood. I hope that you all take this as a wake-up to be very vigilant because when my daughter told me, I got very, very upset because that could have gone south very quickly, and that's all I want to say. I thank you for allowing me to put this out there because I don't want anyone to feel the way I felt the other night when she told me this. It scared me. So anyway, that's what I have to say, and let's get HPD and the media services to do, you know, PSAs in the evening dinner hour when the news is on, just a reenactment, something filmed here in the parking lots of our local shopping centers so that, you know, Kamaki Shopping Center, Kahala, all of them, because this is a problem, and it is getting worse. So there you have it. Thank you so very much for allowing me to tell all of you. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you very much, Noella, for that comment. All right, any other, any other public input? From the community, online or in person? Okay, if not, we will move on to community updates, and we did hear from KBPA. So we'll move on to Kapulani Community College. Is Carol Yoshiko on by any chance? No? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to presentations. So we're glad to have Eric McCutcheon from the Hawaii Bicycling League to provide us his presentation this evening. Eric, take it away.
Thank you, sir. How's it going, everybody? All right, thank you. So for the past months, months, maybe even a year now, we have been studying micro-mobility, tiny transportation, things like this. And next slide. This, next slide. These, next slide. These. And next slide. These. And next slide, the popping wheelies up and down Wailei. These. And finally, these also. We've also been looking at mass transportation. Why? As alternatives to one person in one car going one, two, or three miles, just a horrible thing for the planet and you and life in general. So what we're going to do is we're gonna continue that because the test is next month, right? The written test is next month. So we're gonna continue studying. But first, next slide. We have an advertisement from HBO. So join eight hundred of your favorite people doing their favorite thing, going a hundred miles on a bike. Yay! Or less, if you want fifty, twenty-five, turn around wherever you want. September twenty-ninth, see you there. Doesn't quite go through our neighborhood here, but it goes nearby. hbl.org to register. All right, one more set of tiny transportation. Next slide, this group. Again, I'm just gonna kind of ask questions or kind of leave sentences unsaid, and you can just scream out answers. All right, so this group right here, upper left includes motor scooters, upper right, motor cycles, and the bottom, auto cycles. So legally, auto cycles. So let's see, the color of their license plate? White? A large automobile-sized license plate or a smaller plate? Smaller, very good. They must go at least, how many miles an hour? Thirty-one and up. So they're not mopeds or anything else. Let's see, do they have R-cil? Do they have registration, safety, insurance, license for the driver, license for the device? Yes, they got all that kind of stuff. Helmets? Yes, until age eighteen. Seat belts? Not required. Recommended for the bottom. All right, so a group to be aware of on the road. Speaking of being on the road, here's some Hawaii revised statutes. It's a nice promise. But does this piece of law apply to all of the micro-mobility devices, machines, contraptions that we've looked at so far? No, it applies to some, but not all. But is this rule that we as road users should be aware of our responsibilities and duties, regardless of what we're doing on the road space? Yes, everyone's yelling out, I love it. Okay, so something to think about for the long. All right, so let's move on to real, real vehicles now. Ah, these cute little guys. NEVs standing for? Neighborhood electric vehicle. Yes, very good, everyone. Where were you a couple months ago? All right, or LSVs, low-speed vehicles. Yeah, they are not golf carts. There are laws and rules for these guys. For example, they can go a maximum of how many miles per hour?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five! Oh, my gosh, the audience is just amazing. So twenty-five miles an hour? So can they go up Cal Highway? No, that's thirty-five. Most of it's marked thirty-five. Can they go down Wailei? Yes, Coco Head? Yes, can they go to Leho Leho School and drop the kids off? Yes. Are they smaller than most other vehicles on the road? Yes. Okay, so kind of cute. But are they the answer to our traffic jams and wasteful use of our earth's materials? Not really, not if you're one person driving one vehicle going one, two, or three miles. So maybe, how about these? Ah, in Japan, they're called K cars. Okay, we call them K cars here. Very interesting, very cute. Again, they're smaller, so they use less materials. It might be electric, might be combustion engine. Interesting about them, their steering wheel is on the right. That's okay, because do they have license, registration, safety, everything like that? Yeah. But is it good to mix left and right steering wheels on the road? I'll leave that up to you to think about and the law to think about. Are they the answer to our traffic jams and use of materials and pollution and everything? Probably not, because it's still one person going in one device for one, two, or three miles. Next. How about these? Well, I think most of us would say these are the problems. Sorry, okay, and I'm a driver too. My family, we own three cars, and there's three of us, and two bikes, so I drive too, just to be transparent. But one person, one vehicle like this, one, two, or three miles, yikes, right? That's a lot of materials. So everyone says this is the answer. Ah, are these the answer? Electric vehicles? No, they're just the second worst thing you could choose, right? There's still one vehicle, one driver going maybe one, two, or three miles. Are they better than combustion engine? Yes, okay, they definitely save energy. They save materials. They're a little easier on our planet. Why are we saying this? Here's the new piece of information, but I haven't taught you, so you don't know this one. Fifty-two percent, can you believe that that is the percent of all modes of transportation across the entire United States of trips taken three miles or less every single day, every single year? Half of the trips taken on this planet. Half of the trips taken on this planet, three miles or less year after year after year. So if we can get rid of those big ones, if we can get rid of half of what's on our roads at any given time, wouldn't that be kind of nice? That'd be something to think about. So what is the answer? Again, slightly joking. It will be on the final. What is the answer? Pedal buses, you're all right. Again, good for the environment, good for mass transportation, good for health and exercise, good for social interaction. Yes, uh, again, I'll let private development and our lawmakers think about pedal buses as the future of uh, Hawaiians solving our transportation problems. Text the written test next month. Be ready. See you then. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. I always appreciate that. Uh, any questions for Eric? Anyone? If not, thanks again. We're looking forward to that test next month. Oh, actually, we do have a path. Judy, okay, Judy, do you have a question?
Yes, Aloha, this is Po from Councilmember Se's office. Um, I have a question. I have constituents, um, call, sorry, hi. I have constituents calling in regards to the electric. Is it like a motorbike that looks like a dirt bike? Um, and I wanted to ask a little bit more information about that. Um, that has to be licensed, correct? And that, I've seen them on our streets of, um, like Pohola. But how high or what's the MPH on those? Because I've seen them go pretty fast on like Kapulani, so if I could ask those questions, I appreciate it.
The 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 line between bicycles and electric bicycles and motorcycles and electric motorcycles and combustion, that line is getting very, very hazy. Uh, what is a pedal? Do pedals have to be usable? Is that really what makes a bike? When they can have pedals, but they can go fifty-five miles an hour out of the box and be modified to go ninety-eight miles an hour? Um, I don't know, but I think really the the trick, the problem is, and I know HBL and other organizations are working with HPD and other organizations to more better define uh, what these vehicles are. Some combination of two wheels and giant engines and fast speeds and what the laws pertaining to them should be. So it is a work in progress. And until then, the kids are going to have fun. So we all just again have to respect the rights and responsibilities of everyone who's on that road doing whatever they're doing at at the time. Did that answer the question or?
Yeah.
It's confusion. It's confusion.
I know that, um, when I was researching it, there were, there was a fine line, um, in regards to those motorbikes, the ones that look like motorbikes with no pedals, and they're quiet, but they go really fast. Um, and I've had constituents, uh, for our, that have called our office to see like if they need helmets, because I know you were just saying that the helmet law is that they're supposed to be wearing helmets until they're eighteen, but clearly there isn't any of these kids that are actually riding these vehicles have no helmets, um, especially on the mopeds and stuff too. So I just, I just wanted to clarify the information that you had, because I had constituents calling, but I appreciate it.
I think the best news is is that, uh, I I know that these laws are under review and hopefully we can improve them and get some good enforce enforcement and safety.
Okay, Mahalo. Mahalo, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Po. Okay, any other questions for Eric? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it, as always. All right, so we're going to move on to our next presentation, uh, item. And this is the discussion and consideration of a resolution on community concerns regarding student drop off and pickup at Leho Leho Elementary School. So what I would suggest perhaps is there is a draft, uh, resolution um, that, uh, James was was kind enough to to kind of put together. Um, and I know the board, um, has a draft of that. Um, James, would you mind just kind of summarizing that resolution and then we can kind of off the discussion?
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of long, but bullet points, basically. This has been an issue for the folks living around Leho Leho Elementary School for, you know, at least ten years or longer. Um, if you don't know, the traffic congestion, uh, basically, it puts you at a standstill during the drop off and pick up hours. So if you live on like Eighth Avenue or Ninth and you live like, say, across the street from a school, you're unable to get to your house for, uh, quite some time. Sometimes could be ten minutes, sometimes people have said like forty-five. Um, so basically, the community, um, reached out and had asked me if if this was something that could be brought to the board. That's why I brought it to the board last time, but the the principal couldn't be here. Um, but um, this time I decided to draft a resolution because a lot of the community members, they say there's been a lot of talk, but there's been no action. Um, which I know there has been talk, but yeah, there really hasn't been much action. So I think that, uh, what needs to happen is we need to get all the stakeholders involved, which is like the community, HPD, the city and county, you know, the neighborhood board, um, just trying to come up, come up with a solution, um, that can you know, mitigate the situation. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty long resolution, though.
Okay, thank you, James. Um, so it it does, and and correct me if I'm wrong, it does encourage, you know, the administration of the school to collaborate with parents, Honolulu Police Department, City and County of Honolulu, to develop and implement solutions to mitigate the issues there and the congestion. Um, so, um, we'll, we'll get into a discussion, but perhaps because the motion is on the table, um, just to start off the discussion, um, if I can have a motion to adopt the resolution first and a second, and then we could go ahead into discussion and invite folks to comment um, on the issue. So I I'd invite a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution by any of the board members.
Chair, a motion to adopt?
Okay, Po has has has, uh, made a motion any second. Okay, so James has seconded. Okay, so I will, uh, open it up for discussion. Do we have anyone, um, from the community, first of all, here? Would like to comment on the resolution or the issues?
Hi, my name is Amy Brown. I'm a community member. Hi, thank you, um, Mr. Log for bringing that to the board. And also for Dr. Lee here, who is the principal of Leho Leho, who's a new principal, I might add. And he's been doing a very good job trying to find solutions and working uh, with people, talking to them and talk to me at at length. And I think he's done a lot of good things. Uh, one of the things he did was open up Ninth Avenue, which alleviated some of the Eighth Avenue, uh, weight of the four hundred and twenty-some students, which I was really shocked at the number. And then about seventy-nine or so have a program, so they stay there a little longer, so they're not part of that initial rush. They let the kindergarteners go first as, uh, safety issues, and they have placards now because of Dr. Lee on the cars. And, um, you know, I think he has, uh, trying to get the teachers out there and and help with the the traffic. It's the drivers. It's the drivers not following the law in part. Um, and and so that, uh, has something they've been getting away with for, uh, I mean, you said ten years. I believe they're twenty-five. And I'm not the oldest one on the block. I know, so, but it was the previous principals that kind of created a situation that wasn't, um, amenable to community input. And but Dr. Lee is very much so, working with the community policing uh, program and going to have them out there on the first day. And he sent out notices for the drivers to please obey the road rules and not to pass on the left going down Mauna Loa. Uh, you know, that's a little bit of a scary thing, but you know, they take their own hands into consideration. And, um, so there there was a possibility of, um, uh, looking at, uh, the pullouts are being occupied by the neighbors. They're not following the, you know, they're not, they're just sitting in the pullouts, parking there and not leaving it open during the regulated hours. Something to do with sign changes became an issue there, but uh, maybe that can be changed a little bit. Uh, the school is trying to be very nice to the neighbors and not tow their cars. I, and I can see that too. And I I suggested maybe tiered park, uh, tiered pickup. I don't know what the logistics of that, only, um, Dr. Lee would know. Um, you know, at Four Lions have the kids already pre-assigned and that if the, if the, if the pick, drivers don't come at an assigned time, then they don't get to pick up. At that time, they have to circle the block. He mentioned coming down Eighth Avenue from the Maoka side instead of the Makai side, which basically blocks up Mauna Loa. Mauna Loa is the blockade. And that's the one, the bus goes up and down Mauna Loa. A lot of, uh, and so that that's the real issue there. So other than that, I I'll leave it up with, uh, to Dr. Lee, who's been very helpful, and I don't think we can find a better person, uh, to handle the school and this little problem. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Um, before we have our Dr. Lee, um, any, any other, any other comments from the community? Uh, any other questions? Anybody here or online? Okay, so Dr. Lee, if if you don't mind, I'll invite you up and and perhaps you can share an update of of what's been going on at the school to perhaps address the address the issues and the problems.
Absolutely. Um, good evening, everybody. My name is Alan Lee. I'm the principal of Leho Leho Elementary School. I want to first thank the board for inviting me to discuss this important issue. I know, um, as some of us have shared, it's been an ongoing issue for many years. Um, I I certainly, I I don't think anybody likes traffic and congestion. Uh, I'm part of that. Um, and so I recognize that something's got to be done. And, you know, certainly on behalf of the school, we're trying to do our best to be good neighbors to everybody in the community as well. Uh, I I thank Amy for her kind words. Um, we we met and spoke a couple of days ago, or a few times, actually. Um, and bring some number of things. Uh, I'll just share some of the things that we've been trying to do as a school. Um, a couple of different things, uh, I I really break up the issue into two parts. I mean, first off, on the things that we can do, uh, within our grounds. Um, we've tried to make sure that our dismissal process as is as fast and efficient as possible. And so I recognize that, you know, if the kids are not at their designated pickup areas at the right times, that can cause some slowdowns as well. And so we've worked really hard in trying to get that to be as quick as we can. Um, that includes multiple messages to the teachers to get their kids out on time. Um, I roam the halls and make sure the kids are getting out and not lingering, going to the bathroom, staying there, things like that. Because we want to make sure the kids are at their designated pickup spots so that when the parents are there, they can pick them up and go as quickly as possible. Um, that's one thing, I think Amy mentioned some of the placards. We have, we have staff with walkie-talkies, um, stationed, uh, strategic points to try to call so that the kids are ready once the car eventually makes its way up to the line. Um, I've been searching for, uh, a crossing guard. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but that's not a school position. Um, that's actually HPD position, but I'm certainly trying to help find people within the school community who could do it. We currently don't have someone doing that right now. Um, I have staff out in the streets, um, to try to make sure that the pickup and opening the doors and things like that are are fast and efficient. Uh, we have JPO program out there. I've increased the number of kids that we have in our A-plus program. That's been an increase from last year, just so that there's more kids on campus later. And so there's less kids being picked up at that drop-off pickup time. Um, so those are some of the things that we've looked at. I internally, within the DWE, I've I've tried to connect, um, our Eighth and Ninth Avenue parking lots. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but we don't currently have a a place on campus that they can drive in and pick up and drop off. And so I've explored some of that. Um, it it's just not possible with the slope and the setbacks and things. Um, that's what the engineers told me, but we've been doing things like that. I've also been in contact with Councilmember Se's office. He's actually been really helpful. Um, they helped us facilitate a traffic study when I first came on to the school. And that looked at a variety of things, signage and, um, uh, some, some of the traffic flow patterns, uh, and things like that. So one of the the results of that was that they updated some of the signs, um, on Eighth Avenue. Um, the 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 basic report was that they weren't in ideal locations. And so sometimes the community members might have been confused because the signage wasn't clear. And so they just recently, I think in the month of July, um, changed those signage. So that's one side of it. I I think outside of our school walls, what I've tried to do is partner with, um, the HPD Community Policing Program. They were recently on campus, uh, I think last week, walking through, observing our pickup, uh, I'm sorry, our drop off times. I've put in a request for them to come back and hold signage. Um, and so they'll do that, uh, sometime in September, I believe it's September twelfth, they'll do signage, encouraging the parents to follow all of the safety rules and regulations. Don't stop, um, pedestrian safety, things like that. So that'll be something that we're doing in September. Uh, they gave me some other tips in terms of wearing vests and things, so we're we're a lot more visible out on the street. Yeah, those are some of the basic things that we've been trying to do. I think moving forward, as Amy mentioned, the the big slowdown really is Mauna Loa, because people are trying to come on Mauna Loa and turn onto Eighth Avenue for pickup. And, um, it's just a standstill and people are driving into the opposite lanes, right? And so we currently have a traffic flow pattern that includes Mauna Loa. But that's going to be changed, um, very soon. I'm going to message that out to the parents and encourage all of them to not use Mauna Loa as uh, a a way to come to our school for the pickup and the drop off, I'm sorry, the drop off and the pickup times. And so, you know, I I would try my best to message that out, to be out there, to encourage people not to use that main road. Um, I recognize that that's going to shift some traffic a little bit to possibly down further Eighth Avenue. Uh, but we're going to try that out and see if that makes any type of difference. Uh, because I think once Mauna Loa is opened up, that that's going to be a big help for the community. So that's what we're going to try. I think Amy and I bring some of the few other things in terms of the staggered pickup and drop off times. There's some issues with instructional minutes. I'm supposed to provide a certain amount of minutes. And so, you know, there's not a whole lot of play I can do there, but I'm I'm certainly going to look at whether or not we can get some kids out quicker. And that hopefully should help.
All right, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. Uh, any, any questions for Principal Lee? Yeah, James?
Hey, how's it? Thanks for coming. Um, so the crossing guard is through HPD? And is that, is that like a volunteer position through HPD or is that like a paid officer or? Yeah, it's not an officer, officer position, but they do get paid. I believe it's two hours a day, one hour in the morning, one hour at dismissal time. So it's a position that they create and they fund, but certainly the school is trying to help to to fill the position. Because I don't think they actively look to try to do that. And then what about like, um, because I'm a member of the Lions Clubs and that's kind of something that might be of interest to some Lions to come out and volunteer, maybe at the different intersections to help kids cross? Um, if if we wanted to go that route, who would we contact? I think you should first start with HPD, because, um, I don't know what the rules are in terms of community members, not employees, being on the road and trying to direct traffic. Um, but certainly if they're interested, they can contact me and I have the HPD contact person that I've been in communication with to try to get that position up and running. We had a person, we actually found a person, um, but then they have since left the position. And ideally, how many like volunteers uh, would be suitable? That is one employee, um, on the corner of Eighth and Mauna Loa. But if you, let's sort of say if the Lions Club says, hey, we can come help cross, you know, the act as crossing guards. Um, would you want to cover all four corners or just kind of Mauna Loa? Yeah, I think that's the main one, because everyone is trying to come through that one intersection. Okay, the other ones tend not to be as bad. Yes, I think that that's something, maybe not every day, but maybe a couple of times a week that, um, some of the clubs would be interested in. Okay, I'll, um, reach back out to you. Okay. And try to get some more info. I think sounds great.
All right, um, Becky, do you have your hands up? Do you have a question or a comment?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, hi there, I'm a Leho Leho mom, or I graduated, actually, my my uh, sixth grader just finished at Leho Leho, Mika Kawai, and my older one, Hana, was there too. So I see Mrs. Wong there in the audience, and I just wanted to say hi. And I also, um, want to ask, because I think you have like thirty-plus years at that school. So I want to know what you think, Mrs. Wong. Um, but I also wanted to note, I remember talking to the former principal, Mrs. Wong, many years ago about the neighborhood board, because I was on the neighborhood board at the time then. And she told me a a nice story about how the neighborhood board, the Kaimeki Neighborhood Board, several years ago, um, advocated to put a stop sign, I think it was on Eighth and Mauna Loa, because at some point, some car was because at some point some car was speeding down and took the sign out of um a cross guard's hand, just wiped it out. So people will speed down that road and for me, the preeminent concern should be the safety of the kids. Um, so it may mean that there's congested traffic at these times, but I, I don't want to trade off the safety of the kids. Um, I, I think the resolution is good. I read it, you know, I don't think it's too long. I'm famous for long notes. So, um, so I, I think it's fine for that reason. And I think it's um well drafted and it's the right pitch, but one approach, I don't know if this would work, but um is there a way that you can in- incentivize more walkers? Maybe like a wellness initiative, you know, maybe the kids can get in some sort of contest of how many steps they get with their parents or something like, is there something that you can do to reduce the number of drivers? The other thing is on Ninth Avenue, I've been up and down that street and oftentimes people get confused and they can't see that there's a little space that you can shimmy to the side so the car can get through. And they'll just like kind of sit right in front of the driveway and it's, I wonder if Ninth Avenue, if you put drop off bays on that similar to Eighth, if that would improve the flow. You would mean less street parking, but that could help or maybe just during certain times of the day. Um, and then my final comment and question would be, I, I grew up on the mainland in a pretty rural area and um probably fifteen percent of the students were walkers. And everyone else rode a bus. And I'm just wondering like, is we just don't fund buses in Hawaii? Like, why don't we just have a school bus system to maybe figure out a different way to do this? That's all. Thanks.
All right. Thanks very much. Uh, other questions?
This goes to my heart because I lived in Mauna Loa for thirty years now and I'm, but I'm closer to Eleventh Avenue, but I take that path. And Mauna Loa is well used. It's used by people in Kahala, people in downtown. They use it as a, you know, commuting back and forth. So it's a busy street. And so the Eighth and Mauna Loa, I think by clearing up Mauna Loa, that'd be really great if you can do that, because the buses and everybody's going up and down too. And then on Eighth and Mauna Loa, I had a question. There used to be an elderly man there. He used to direct the traffic. I was there yesterday by accident coming up at two oh three PM and already cars were starting to line up on Mauna Loa and Eighth. And, but I didn't see anybody directing, ready to direct the kids. Um, that was two oh three PM. Um, I think it'd be safe because I worry and there was a car coming contract to me. And there was a car in front of me. I'm coming up Mauna Loa yesterday and same thing, you know, this happened a lot. They, they're cutting on the my lane, you know, the opposing lane. And it was scary. And I was thinking, I always think if there's a child crossing, you know, if somebody is even there to kind of, and my good friend lives on Eighth and Mauna Loa on the corner there. So I talked to her and I talked to her about it today. And that's her fear too. She can see from her window, the kids sometimes trying to cross and, and people coming down in the opposite. So anyway, just my thoughts.
Pick. Any other questions or comments? Oh.
Hey, Doctor. Um, long time problem with, it's been going since my kids went to school there, since I went to school there. So this is nothing new. All the ideas that are batted around right now, these are all regurgitated ideas. It's still good to revisit them, which is what you're doing. The one thing I want to compliment you on, it sounds like you're trying to take the guys from Mauna Loa to Eighth, out to like Kilauea and then Eighth. That's a great thing. Let us know how that goes. Does that be a good follow up with that? Uh, the only other thought I could give you is volunteers like James is saying, that'd be great. If you could get like Guanas Club, maybe to do like sign waving out there. And that might be, it's not peer pressure, but it's helping to communicate to the travelers at that time to say, go this way or slow down or obey the law. Be a good neighbor like you have been, but at the end of the day, some resident can say, hey, there's people parking not supposed to. The cops will come if you call nine one one. We don't want to be their person. That's not Hawaii. But unfortunately, at some point you may have to do something leaning that way, maybe not that way as far. But sounds like you're doing everything you can. The resolution, if it passes, will help emphasize those things. But at the end of the day, what you're doing with your parents and what you have control over will make the biggest impact. As much as you can get the community to buy into that, being the random person driving down Mauna Loa on the left hand side, good luck. But if we can, those are other ideas, maybe to perhaps get them to uh play nicely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the board has the resolution. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Again, it's a resolution urging the Lehelehiho Elementary School, Honolulu Police Department and the city and county of Honolulu to address traffic congestion caused by school drop off and pickup activities. Any other questions, comments on the resolution? Any changes to the language? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Hi, um, my name is Cindy Wong. Thank you for letting me speak before you. I want to thank all of you for serving on the board and for everything I'm hearing is the first neighborhood board meeting I've ever been to. Um, I am not a resident of Kamaki, but Kamaki lives in my heart because I've taught at Lehelehiho for thirty six years. And I started out student teaching almost forty years ago there. So my roots go very deep. All my children have gone there. I met my husband there. Um, so it's really my second home and it means a lot to me as well as all my students that I have taught over that many years. Um, so I think the thing is we, I, I want to apologize for all the traffic. My classroom is actually the closest to Eighth Avenue where all the cars line up for pickup, drop off. So I see it for the past however many years. And like you've shared, it has gotten worse over the years. Um, in the past, we've had a lot more people walking and I think we had a lot more children living right within our neighborhood. And so they would walk. We had a lot of parents walking their children, but um like you shared, a lot of them will choose to, you know, come in their cars instead. Um, I know the, the focus is on the traffic. Um, I apologize for that because we love our neighbors. Um, we really do. And together we make up the Kamaki Neighborhood. Um, if we can focus on the reason for the traffic is trying to get our children to transport and commute safely to our school grounds. Um, over the years, I have seen former students become doctors, police officers, firefighters, pharmacists, veterinarians, um professors, you name it. Um, and I feel we've really worked hard within our school to educate these children's minds. Um, I'm very proud of our school, proud of our, our, my colleagues. Um, by the way, I did retire. I just retired, but they're still my colleagues in my heart. Um, so you know, if, if we can focus on these parents, yes, some of them are not following rules, but our goal is to get our children to campus and from campus safely in a, a more efficient way. And um I've already heard some brainstorming, problem solving with even reaching out to Lions. Um, trying to have an incentive to have more of our parents walk. Um, and this is kind of what we need. Um, Dr. Lee has been our principal for nearly two and a half years. But I want you to know that within the thirty six years I've been there, he has done amazing things. And his belief has always been giving the teachers, faculty, staff, even the children, a strong voice. And he has this practice collaborative decision-making um and brainstorming and solving problems together, whether it be math or social issues. And even as early as kindergarten, um which I taught, he really emphasizes that having children work together, problem solve, you know, help each other out. And I think you know, he is very welcome to that and so are we um as a whole Lehelehiho community. And I think if we can get more brainstorming, um problem-solving solutions shared with us. Um, as you've heard, Dr. Lee has been trying so many different things within the two and a half years he's been there. Um, and he mentioned that teachers are out opening car doors and stuff, but he is too. Um, I see him from my classroom because I'm, my class is right there. Dr. Lee is out there almost every single morning unless he has a meeting. He's there after school, um even if he has meetings almost every day after school for the students um with their parent. Um, he's opening car doors. He's getting to know kids by name, parents by name. So an effort, a true effort is really being made. So I thank you um for trying to help us. And if there is more brainstorming, um, Dr. Lee really is an open door policy person who's very welcome um to ideas. And I think if we work together, we'll be stronger. Um, all for the sake of this beautiful neighborhood and a school that I just love so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Wong. Uh, thank you, Principal Lee for, for the updates and thank you to everyone for all the, all the comments and suggestions and uh brainstorming. Thanks, James, for, for drafting the resolution. Uh, so we do need to move on. So I will call for a vote on the resolution. Yes. Yeah, sure. Okay, Audrey, go ahead.
That's all. And thank you very much. It's so well done and you put the effort into it. Um, I just, cause Mauna Loa on the fourth paragraph, emergency vehicles. I was wondering if you should put and city buses also because they're also going into those opposite direction lanes too. And it's quite, quite square, scary. And um perhaps if this goes to the city council and the mayor, because there are, if we could maybe add, if you think so, emergency vehicles and city buses. And then not, and just a small point on the sixth, sixth paragraph, um, safety and accessibility in the neighborhood. I thought set up out of neighborhood. It's just a small point, but that one. Thank you very much. That was very well done. Nothing.
Yeah, do we need a motion to, to adopt those amendments or, okay, all right. Okay, okay. So uh I'll invite our motion to amend the resolution to incorporate uh Audrey's uh suggestions. So if we can have a motion for that. Okay, so James, uh motions, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, who has seconds? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. So uh, so we'll go back to the, the motion to adopt the resolution. And again, it, it has been amended. Um, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of adopting the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much again, everybody. All right. Okay, so we will move on in the agenda. Um, so it is seven thirty. We have until eight thirty this evening to wrap up the meeting. So we will go to the mayor's representative, Mark Wong. Mark, are you on?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I'm going to start with um just some recaps from the mayor's newsletter, which you can find online at the city website, uh navigate to the mayor's webpage and then to the newsletter. So the, the big story in the current issue of the newsletter is the city's effort on homelessness. So it's a, there's been an unprecedented collaboration between the state and the city to address homelessness. And the city's announced that um before next year, um in the twelve months for twenty twenty four, they expect to bring a thousand units online, bed, beds to house the homeless. Um, there've been some important facilities that have been opened. Uh, the first is uh, uh, one near Ala Park. If you're familiar with the old First Hawaiian Bank branch there, the city acquired that and has turned that into a shelter. Uh, they've also opened some space in the uh Leahii Hospital in, in Kamaki. And the uh Waikiki Vista on Kapilani Boulevard. So those are just three of the uh, the buildings that the, the city has been um expanding their efforts into house the homeless. Uh, there's some other things that have kind of passed, uh, the, the um services for the lifeguard Tamayo Perry. Um, refurbishing of the Mahama, Mahatma Gandhi statue in Waikiki and some new trash cans in Waikiki. And as I mentioned in a previous uh meeting, the new ocean safety department and the new director that was uh sworn in at Honolulu Halli. So all these stories are covered in the, the newsletter. Uh, there was also some discussion about um fire and I, I did want to point out that there is a website, fairly new website called responsemapping.com. And uh one of the things that it can uh do is tell you where all the fires are for a given period. So I'm going to share a screen here. You can see what this looks like. If you go, you can select the time period and the neighborhood and it'll tell you every event that's a fire or an EMS uh type of event. I'm not sure exactly how far it goes back, but you can, you can dial in the, the time period and you can zoom into neighborhoods. So you might find that very useful. Um, that's, that's a fairly new website. Um, there aren't any really new responses um back from the administration. Um, they did again, take a look at the traffic signals along Wai'au and don't find that there any in disrepair. And the uh second item, I'm not going to address because we just spent a lot of time on that, which is the school traffic. Um, I will take back, oh, and of course, uh, recently the mayor won reelection. So he will not be running in the general because he uh got enough votes to put him back in office. In case you didn't know that. Um, that concludes my report, but if you have any new items to take back to the administration or questions, I'll try to field them now.
All right. Any questions for Mark to take doc as the mayor's representative? Questions or comments from the board? From the public? All right. Well, if not, thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. Okay, so we'll move on to council member Tommy Waters' office.
Thank you Chair Kang and members of the board. I'm Adam Do from Council Chair Tommy Waters' office. Um, building off of Director Wong's um uh homeless initiative, uh, I'd like to briefly uh report on the Kamaaina Housing Package, package, also known as the Empty Home Tax discussed today at the Housing Committee. Uh, these bills address Oahu's housing crisis. Today, Oahu's median home price exceeds one point one million dollars. A recent U-Hero study shows that our rent is the highest in the country. That's higher than New York City, LA, San Francisco. Oahu needs over eighteen thousand seven hundred additional housing units to meet its demand. Sixty seven thousand residents left Oahu in twenty twenty two. Many of us have family, neighbors and friends who have moved to the continent. Chair Waters has felt this personally. He is one of six siblings and he's the only one um remaining, you know, in Hawaii. Uh, this package includes three bills, bills forty six, forty seven and forty eight. Bill forty six uh introduces a empty homes tax to encourage the conversion of vacant homes into housing for local families. These are on estimate, there are an estimated uh thirty four thousand vacant homes on Oahu. This bill de-incentivizes outside investors from buying properties, letting them sit vacant and selling them. Bill forty seven addresses the city's housing supply challenges by preserving Ohana land for local families. It decreases real property tax for property uh, owned by descendants of individuals who have owned the property at least uh, eighty years. And lastly, Bill forty eight addresses the city housing uh, supply challenges by encouraging long-term residential leasing to increase availability. Uh, this would decrease property taxes for property owners who dedicate their property for long-term leases. Uh, it gives homeowners the same benefit as if you live, as if they were to live there. Um, if you rented out for uh, a long term. And uh, with that, I'm happy to take back any questions to Chair Waters.
All right. Thank you very much, Adam. So I see Becky's hand up. Becky, go ahead.
Hi, Adam. Um, thanks. I am wondering about animals. I, I just know a lot of people who've been stuck. Um, landlords won't renew leases and they have a dog or, or something. Um, there's a lot of animals that end up in the humane society just because people can't find a home. Happened to me. I, I had a rescue for a bit and then I got displaced three times in eighteen months myself. And the last one, I um, couldn't take my dog with me. And um, sad about that. So I think that um, that's like a big issue that a lot of families have to figure out um, when they're going through these moves. And I, I know the humane society gets a little overwhelmed. Um, I had myself had asked my landlord, my current landlord, if I could um, take care of a cat for a couple of weeks, you know, just do those one of those cat settings. And he said no. So I'm just wondering if there's something that could be done legislatively to address, you know, all these sort of um, forgotten animals. That's all.
Thank you. Um, that's an interesting point. Um, we'll, we'll look into that and I'll, I'll get back to you.
All right. Thanks, Becky. Uh, any other questions or comments for Adam and Councilmember Cher's office? All right, seeing none. Thank you very, oh, Poa, did you have a comment? No? Oh, okay. Thanks for your part. Okay, thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up. Okay, so we will move on to Councilmember Say's office.
Hi, everyone. This is Poa from Councilmember Say's office. Um, I just wanted to put on my camera because I'm um, speaking for Councilmember Say. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that the um, the August uh, month, monthly newsletter is in the chat. The web link is in the chat. We also have some important uh, web links in the chat that we, I just put in. It's um, to sign up for the Complete Streets newsletter. If you guys are interested in what's going on with Complete Streets in your area, so please sign up for their upcoming projects. Um, the biggest thing is that we want to be aware of the real property tax timeline and the important dates that are happening. And that's at www dot realpropertyHonolulu dot com. We just want to keep um, keep those dates in mind of if anybody wants to, you know, repeal anything or if anything, um, there's any problems with your property tax, by all means, please make sure to look at those dates. Um, and as everybody knows, uh, the modification for the bus routes started August eighteenth, twenty twenty four. So um, if you wanted to look at what the new schedules are, it's at www dot thebus dot org slash rider alerts dot A S P. And that's also in the chat. Um, the other things that I wanted to speak about was, oh, hold on a moment, just give that, watch this thing. Okay, so um, there was some city budget bill highlights of Bill twenty six that relates to the designating of the month of May as honor our kupuna month to recognize and honor the great wisdom generational and generational knowledge and substantial contributions of our beloved kupuna on Oahu. Um, there are some um, um, upcoming meetings um, that you guys might be, might want to be aware about. Um, for everybody that hasn't, hasn't gone to the uh, primary urban center development, develop plan meeting, there are two, I believe, one more available sometime this month. Um, I'll get back to you on what exact, was the exact date on that. Um, the other thing too is we want to just congratulate our new District Five Neighborhood Board Officers. Um, and also um, we're gonna, since as everybody knows, it's August and uh, Councilman Say is going to be retired at the end of his term. Um, so um, there is going to be a new um, a new council member, uh, which is Scott Nishiboto. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to ask. Uh, I have, I'm happy to answer or bring them back to the office.
All right. Thanks very much, Poa. Any uh, questions or comments for Councilmember Say's office? Okay, if not, thank you very much.
Sure.
Wow. All right. Uh, Governor Josh Green's representative, is Amanda Stevens on by any chance?
Aloha. Thank you for having me.
Oh, hi, Amanda. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, first of all, I wanted to say thank you um, very much for the informative information. As someone who lives in Kamaki, um, it's, it's nice to um, hear from the teacher who's been there for very long. I need to check your ID. I can't believe you're um, been teaching for that long. So, but anyway, I wanted to say thank you. Now unofficially, I wanted to let you know I'm going to include the newsletter in the chat. And when you, when you do see the newsletter, you're gonna um, I would like you to pay particular attention to missing children's um, uh, the story in there. And, and just to realize that when, when children are being trafficked, it's not typically what one thinks. It can be someone who's, you know, a neighbor, a local children, um, people who are, it doesn't matter what kind of economic background that child has. Um, we ask that we, the neighbors have a makaala to report what you see, what you hear. And even if you feel something's not right, to please um, report child abuse and neglect, adult abuse, adult abuse and neglect and as, as well as um, human trafficking and child trafficking. Um, I'm also going to include in the chat, the newsroom. There's been a lot of new um, press releases. And as Mayor's Representative uh, was talking about the great collaboration between the city and the state as it relates to the houses community. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions and take it back to the governor's office. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Any questions or comments for uh, Amanda as Governor Green's representative? I'm sorry? Sarah, do you have a question or comment?
Oh, yes. Actually, this was for Poa, um, not Amanda. So Poa, you mentioned the um, kupuna, valuable kupuna or something program? So in Calvin's district, there's a hundred four-year-old artist teacher, my good friend, Estron Nowell. So I think somebody was going to follow up on that for us.
Oh, that's wonderful. So um, what I can do is I can give you my direct email in the chat. And then you can email me all her information and we can see if we can honor her at maybe the next meeting, um, the next full council meeting or anything like that. Because that would be something that we would love to honor for her. Absolutely.
Yeah, because she's getting older, you know?
Just a little bit, but it sounds like she's fantastic, though.
Yeah, she's deaf, though, so.
Okay.
But yeah, but thank you. And I would show my face, but I'm so bored, so I'm only doing the audio.
That's okay. Um, but yeah, I will uh, put my email in the chat for you um, so that you can email me that, her information. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks, Poa.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Poa. Um, Becky, did you have a question or comment for uh, Amanda?
Yes, for Amanda. Um, I don't know if Amanda was listening um, to the discussion about the Lehelejo traffic, but I was just curious about um, buses. And um, we don't have much of a school bus system. My, my daughter, my high schooler, has a, a bus pass, which is great, and she can use it when she buses elsewhere and I don't have to cut around, which is great. But um, but I'm just curious, so why is it in Hawaii we don't have a, you know, a, look, big network of school busing? Um, is it because we're so congested? Um, you know, I think a lot of it's exacerbated with all the GE business and everyone's trying to get into different schools and they're dragged all across the islands, you know? And I, I'm just curious, like, why is it that we don't have a good bus network, school bus network? If, if there's any sort of historical information on that, I was curious.
Thank you, Becky. I will certainly take that back to the governor's office. And as you know, it was recently in the news, right, that there was even a shortage of drivers. Not so much the shortage of the buses, but that in itself was an issue too. So I'll take it back to the governor's office as well as Department of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks again, Amanda. Appreciate the updates. Uh, so we will move on to Senator Stanley Chang's office. Is the senator on or his representative? Okay, if not, uh, Senator Ihara emailed me. He will not be able to make it this evening. So we will move on to State Representative Jackson Sayama. Is Representative Sayama on or his representative?
Yes, Chair, I'm here.
Hi, Representative, go ahead.
Hello, uh, Chair members of the board. Um, not a whole lot uh, in the state side. Uh, did want to follow up regarding the state libraries uh, in Kamaki. I know we had some questions about uh, renovations and repairs to the parking structure. Uh, so I did follow up with the state libraries. Uh, unfortunately, they said that while Kamaki is on the repair list, uh, it is still a little bit lower as there are more s- uh, school library facilities uh, around the state that are, are, that are in much more dire needs for these fundings. Um, some need to get asbestos removed. Uh, there's the central air conditioning system isn't functioning, so they need to uh, install a new system there. And so again, um, it's a, it's a dynamic situation. So I'm always going to obviously advocate for Kamaki to be a priority on that list. But just know that the state library is aware of it. Uh, and they're trying to make sure that all its facilities are well taken care of. Um, aside from that, we did have um, a motor vehicle accident involving a moped on Wailei in front of the McDonald's at Palolo. Um, again, something I've been uh, interested in legislating is moped safety issues. So that includes helmet and insurance. And again, this is just another one of those cases which I think highlight the need for these types of legislative initiatives. Again, something I hope to improve on and work on our next legislative session. Um, with that, I'm open to questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Representative. Any questions or comments for Representative Sayama? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Representative. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming by. All right. Uh, State Representative Bert Kobayashi, is he on or his representative? Okay, seeing none. Uh, is Congressman Ed Case on or his representative? All right. If that will move to announcements, um, I don't have any announcements. Are there any announcements for the members of the board? All right. Seeing none. Uh, board business, approval of the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, June nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We're a little behind on the written summaries of video record. Uh, at least the board is. Our, our neighborhood assistant has been on it, but the board has been behind on approving these. Uh, hopefully, everybody's got a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those summaries of video record?
So clarifying July meeting, the election of officers. Uh, it has, Paul Ho was nominated as chair. It should be vice chair. Not, not, not doing that one. Thank you very much.
I don't know if that was a mistake or not. Maybe it shouldn't be on kind of guy.
I'm here, I got his back.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that correction. I don't know, we should have laughed at it, I think. You, you could have been sure. All right. Okay, any other corrections or comments? All right, seeing none. If I can have a motion to approve um, those written summaries of video record. All right, it's been moved. Any second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries. Those written summaries of video record are approved. Okay, reports, members attendance at other meetings. Any board members attend any other meetings? Okay, seeing none. Next meeting of this board is on Wednesday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, six thirty PM, right here at the Kamaki Public Library Meeting Room and remotely via WebEx. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending. This meeting is adjourned.